Manistee City Council, Wednesday, July 5, 2017, meeting is not called before the Councilman Goodspeed will lead us in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
City group, please take.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Here.
Councilmember Panayet?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Canyon and zoning director?
Here.
Public safety director?
Here.
And city engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Our big hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak to items that are on the agenda. We would ask you to come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes if you wish to speak. Are there any citizen comments? None, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed to taken up during a regular course of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenues and expenses, notification regarding the next work session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll make the motion. I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion? Please take your role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here. Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Panayet?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Well, thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of a pilot ordinance number seventeen dash zero nine. PK three C, Manistee Senior Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership. PK three C, Manistee Senior Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership, through negotiations with the city, have revised their pilot request to two percent of net sheltered rents for a term of thirty-five years for the senior project proposed for the former Olson's Plaza property. City attorney has taken action to draft the pilot ordinance for this request. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. Separate from the pilot ordinance, but part of the negotiated terms, a municipal service agreement will be considered after consideration of ordinance number seventeen dash zero nine. At this time, council could take action to introduce ordinance number seventeen dash zero nine, PK three C, Manistee Senior Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership Pilot.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion by councilmember Beaton and a second by councilmember Whitlock. Any discussion?
Yes, I was wondering if Ed Bradford could go over the numbers for the public? Is he here?
Yeah. Please. So, councilmember Beaton, in response to your question, I'm just going to go over the memo that was included in your packet.
That would be great.
As opposed, I've published several other financial analyses related to this, but this is the most recent that the city manager had asked me to pull up. So, what the numbers that I presented to council in the packet, they compare three different things. The first is the revenue that's generated from the current parking lot area of the Olson's complex, and that generates approximately fifteen hundred and forty dollars in taxes per year. Now, keep in mind that that parcel is not split off, that's a prorated portion, and it's an estimate that's provided by the assessor. Of that fifteen hundred and forty-one dollars, approximately a hundred and eighty-five of that goes to the city's general fund, four hundred and eighty-four dollars goes to the Downtown Development Authority, and eight hundred and seventy-three dollars goes to all the other taxes that are lobbied. I then compared that to the ten percent thirty-five-year pilot, which generates approximately eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars per year in total fees, and these are first full year of operation numbers. That pilot scheme would generate about fifty-six hundred and seventy-one dollars for the city's general fund. It would not generate anything for the Downtown Development Authority because the Downtown Development Authority does not capture pilots, they only capture ad valorem taxes. And the total amount of taxes, or in this case pilot, that would be generated is about eighteen thousand nine hundred and two dollars. If you compare that with the two percent thirty-five-year pilot and an eighty-five-hundred-dollar municipal service fee, that generates in total about twelve thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, which is about six thousand seven hundred dollars less than what the ten percent pilot generates. However, for the city portion, the city itself would be receiving about ninety-six hundred dollars a year. Again, the DDA would collect nothing, and the other taxing jurisdictions would get about twenty-six hundred dollars a year. The difference there is that the municipal service fee goes to all, or goes to the city only, whereas the pilot's distributed amongst the taxing jurisdictions. So, in summary, both of the pilot options offer significantly more revenue than the taxes that are being generated based on the estimated value of the parking lot area. The two percent pilot yields more revenue to the city because of the municipal service fee and the fact that it's not distributed to taxing jurisdictions. However, the ten percent pilot yields more overall revenue. The city itself would receive less than the two percent option in that particular scenario. One of the questions that was raised as to what impact that has on the schools if there was not a ten percent pilot. And the way the school funding works is that the base allowance that goes to the schools, the per pupil foundation, the state makes the schools whole on that regardless of how much local taxes are brought in. So, in the case of a lower number of pilot payments that would be made under the two percent in the municipal service fee for the school, per pupil allowance, it wouldn't negatively impact that, and that was the question that was posed because the state would make them whole. The other item that I noted was that the eighty-five-hundred-dollar municipal service fee with a one-and-a-half percent annual escalator generates about fifty-eight thousand dollars more over a thirty-five-year period than the previously offered six thousand dollar municipal service fee with a two-and-a-half percent escalator. So, that was kind of the narrow focus that the city manager had asked me to work the numbers on, and so that's what I did. Are there any questions on that?
Yes, there is. The school fund, there's a school debt village, a little over four mills.
Correct.
There's an ISD village. There's a community college village. Does the state make those entities whole for those missing villages?
The state does not.
Okay. So, the ISD and the school debt would lose fifty thousand dollars over the thirty-five-year period of time, and I've got some numbers for the community college that loses about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what would be approximately right.
Okay. So, the per pupil funding is standard, it's not exactly standard throughout the state based on assessment and taxes collected in different districts, isn't it?
The per pupil funding does vary from district to district, but whatever the state establishes as your foundation allowance for the local school district, they make sure that the schools get that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I do favor this two percent plus the municipal services fee over the ten percent pilot because I do feel it's our obligation, if we state that we're concerned about continuing to fund through our general fund services such as police and fire and streets, it behooves us to really deeply consider taking this option since it does bring more revenue into the city. The fact that the county commissioners have appeared before us and have supported the senior housing component, and they have taken a look at both proposals when it was just a six thousand dollar municipal fee, and still supported it, leads me to believe that they're confident that they're going to gain a benefit by having such a nice development in our city, and they will also benefit by the fact that several properties will become uncapped in the future. So, I look at it as everything is lining up very favorably, so I don't know why. I would want to choose the ten percent pilot over this. I think it's a worthy project no matter what, that will probably underline my deciding vote, but I also believe that we, as counselors, are obligated to really think about who we represent, and we represent the people, the taxpayers in the city of Manistee. And since this one would bring more revenue to the city, I think that's the way to vote, and that's my opinion on the subject.
Question for staff, implications or burdens to the city. Could you fill us in on what you see or what predictions that we have? I know it's not a hundred percent.
You mean in terms of service?
How it's going to impact the city, this development, is it going to affect the city negatively or with city services?
We talked among staff, DPW probably wouldn't have any presence there. There would be no increase in service needs for the DPW, probably little if any for police in terms of fire with a new building fully suppressed, you know, we're hoping we don't have fire there in the very near future. Probably, given that the age and the demographics there, probably we would expect to see an increase in ambulance calls, but that also could be a revenue generator if they're transported. So, I think probably in terms of service delivery to that development, probably the greatest would be through EMS.
Down the road where I was going with that question, down the road, our services wouldn't be affected by the development or developments?
I wouldn't think overall.
Okay.
I mean, we would be able to, given the scale we're at right now, if DPW's saying that they don't have any, they don't see any service delivery for them through DPW, minimal for police, virtually nothing or minimal for fire, and then maybe a greater probability with EMS.
And then?
There's not going to be anything significant.
And then the water, water and sewer, I know we talked about this in the past, many meetings, but I mean, if you could go over that again for the audience?
If I could defer to Jeff from DPW on those numbers?
Okay.
There's several areas where this development would impact the city's infrastructure. The first on sewer is it would create a new sewer customer, obviously. One of the things during the plan review of the Phase One, Phase Two for this project showed that there isn't enough water for fire suppression there, so it would require an extension of a water main from Washington Street down Fillmore through the property and that to the, going east, and then it would turn north on the east side of the current building, back to Taylor Street. That's probably about a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project. It would benefit the entire water system and the fire suppression in that area. Just for the apartment building, the system development charges, so during construction, they would need to pay about thirty-one thousand dollars in system development charges. That would be a one-time fee paid for the buying of water and sewer capacity. And then, I believe there was forty-two units in that building, somewhere in that neighborhood, and working with the engineers, they estimated flow volumes, consumption, and it could generate about thirty-five thousand dollars a year in utility fees. Also, keeping with the infrastructure, the reconstruction of Memorial Drive is actually included in the TIF project for the South Washington Street, which includes the Edgewater and the North Channel Brewing Building. So, basically, that when that road gets reconstructed and it's estimated a little bit over one point one million dollars, the fees that it takes to build that could be recaptured from the TIF that's generated from the Edgewater and the North Channel projects, but the city would have to cash flow that. We've looked at the senior village project, and it would qualify for a category F grant through MDOT, which is about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, or about a third of that total project cost, and we feel very, we feel confident that we can get that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which will help offset the cash that the city needs to generate, and would probably move that project, well, we've got it right now for three years out in our transportation improvement plan. Without that grant funding, we're probably at least ten years out for that. So, there's quite a bit of positive infrastructure impacts.
Would that have any impact on the existing plans for road reconstructions?
It does not because we've anticipated, anticipated that if council approved and that project was built and we were able to receive that, we've already got it built into the transportation improvement plan that's in the current budget.
With the grant?
With the grant, correct.
Thank you.
One of the things that I struggle with is cutting out some of these other groups like ISD, and I'll tell you, library, I mean, even as city residents, and I agree with Councilmember Beaton, that we need to look at our general fund and continue to build that up, but we as city residents also use those, the library, the, this college, the schools, we're all part of that, and I struggle with just cutting them out of the loop. I would like to, I would like to keep them in the loop. I know it means more money this way, but I just know that we use all of those other facilities, we use the dialeride, we use those things. Do we want to cut them out of the loop? Do we want to not give them anything but continue to use their service? And what we would be getting with them, they would be receiving is pretty minor anyway, but at least they're part of this program. That's my struggle right now. I, I don't know.
Mr. Taylor, have you received any feedback from any of those other taxing authorities?
None.
That indicate one way or the other how they feel about this?
I have not.
Well, I know with having a child at ISD that I would not like that. I know that, just going off what Roger said, you know, the city residents use all those and just like this, so the county doesn't get any, any tax money from this, correct? If we do the two percent?
Correct.
And I feel that since we are part of the county, they should be included.
Yeah, they get some, but not the full amount. Right, not as much as we.
They would get the prorated portion on the two percent as opposed to the ten percent. It's just not as much as the ten percent would be. And one thing I want to point out, and I know that this isn't a taxable entity, but if a taxable entity were to go in there, those organizations that you meant wouldn't get any money because it would all be captured by the DDA because it's in the DDA district. So, the only reason that those entities would be getting anything on a pilot is because DDA's don't capture a pilot. I just wanted to make that clear.
Any other comments? Mr. Bradford, could you put the sheet up on the overhead that I handed you? On the front side of it, it says bottom line. I'd like to go over some numbers. I've been asked by a couple of citizens to get away from percentages and talk real numbers and do something so people could understand what some of these numbers look like. Ten percent pilot for thirty-five years, according to the information we were given, comes up to an estimated nine hundred forty-four thousand dollars. I have more of these if you want. The two percent pilot with the eighty-five-hundred municipal service agreement that is factored in with the one-and-a-half percent increase comes up to five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And I think you see that that difference is three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars over thirty-five years. That's not an insignificant piece of change. An eighty-six, an eight-point-six million dollar project that's only going to have a market value of two-point-two million dollars because it's low-income housing, you know? So, twenty-five-point-seven percent of the project cost is actually going to be the market value of what is spent on this project. The estimated tax value would be one-point-one million dollars, and you look at the village with the administration fee, the taxes on an annual basis would be sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. That might not seem like a whole lot, but in the original projection that we got, some of the things from Third Coast with the elaborate packages, they indicated that if they had to pay ad valorem taxes, they'd lose twenty-two thousand dollars a year. But ad valorem taxes of sixty-six thousand, at least forty-four thousand sitting out there for profit or payments or for some other reason. The original pilot estimate that was received before council when we voted on a ten percent thirty-five-year pilot was for an estimated minimum of twenty-two thousand dollars a year, with sixty-five hundred dollars of that going to the city. The two percent pilot with an index of eighty-five-hundred would provide twelve thousand two hundred and eighty dollars the first year, just about ten thousand dollars less than that original estimated amount of money. That also is a fairly significant amount of money. Developer fees, when you look at the package, are nearly a million dollars. That's upfront money. Construction profit, five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The project is being built with tax dollars, seven-point-six million dollars of tax dollars. Then I come back to a question I've had in the past, the need, you know, was the housing assessment done for the county or was the housing assessment done for the city? There are no city-specific housing need assessments that I'm aware of that have been performed in recent history other than for the county, county-wide type data. City of Manistee has five hundred of five hundred and forty-nine affordable housing using units in the county, over ninety percent. The other forty-nine are in father township, by the way. As a result, the median family income, according to citidata.com, two thousand and fifteen information, is five thousand dollars less than the city of Manistee than it is in the county of Manistee. And adding forty-two units of low-income housing at thirty percent, forty percent, and sixty percent adjusted median income levels, is going to add forty-two residents with an average income below nineteen thousand one hundred and ninety dollars to the city. It isn't going to do anything to enhance the average median income in the city. If you could turn that over, Mr. Saylor? I threw some comparisons on here, looking at things in a historical point of view. Reese Park Village, two thousand and one, ten percent pilot for thirty-five years, not less than payment of twenty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars a year. So, that was the minimum, and on top of that, it had a commence date that started, you know, like thirty-one December of two thousand and one, and a completion date, ninety percent substantially complete within twelve months, and the pilot payment started July first the following year. Three million dollar investment. So, eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in pilot from a three million dollar project, if you don't count inflation or anything else along the way. I haven't looked to see what the most recent payments are on that. Manistee Place, which was formerly Chalet West, two thousand and eleven pilot, ten percent pilot for thirty-five years and municipal service agreement. I believe the municipal service agreement's for three percent. I haven't counted anything from the municipal service agreement in the calculations here. The only thing I calculated was the twenty-two thousand five hundred dollar minimum payment that was under the same terms as Reese Park. It had a start date, it had an end date, and it had, you'll start paying the pilot payment by this day, basically eighteen months after construction started. It was a rehabilitation project with a two-point-two million dollar investment, and it used tax credits to do the financing for it. Just for comparison sakes, you know, I know people talk about these cottage condos and all that and the price of them and nobody will buy them. You know, the people aren't getting anything from the city for that other than we vacated an alley that wasn't used, and when they're sold, they start paying taxes. The target market is out of town, so probably mostly non-home step. If one of those homes sells for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, paying tax on fifty percent of that value, it's going to generate eleven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars in taxes for a single residence the first year. Now, you can take the rate of inflation, not to exceed five percent for tax increases and work all that out, and I think, you know, you can see this kind of puts, I'm trying to put in perspective what's being asked for now in comparison to what we've done in the past and what we've received in the past, and the level of investment from the past from what we're being offered now, and I just, I just personally feel the ten percent thirty-five year was where I was willing to compromise at. The twenty-two thousand dollar figure sounded real good right up front for an annual minimum. It was consistent with what we've done in the past, but I question need for additional low-income senior housing in the city when we've got a hundred and sixty-seven units between Century Terrace and Harborview.
Well, I think the fact that there's a waiting list already for a development that hasn't even been started, and there's a waiting list over at Horizon.
I think that's an interest list.
I'm sorry, may I just finish? Reese Park Village, I understand your comparisons, I think comparisons are great, but they also have three-bedroom apartments over there, and we're talking about net shelter rate and rents, so you'd have to really peel that apart to make a fair comparison. And again, we only have a hundred and sixty-seven units in the city designated for fifty-five and older, so I don't think adding another forty-two, given the demographics of our area and our city, is a strain in any way, but that is my opinion, and those are my opinions on your numbers, too.
I would really like to know just where we're at, and I guess I want to talk with Mr. Levitt here. Is Dave here?
Yes.
Oh, hi, Dave.
Hi.
Can you kind of bring me up to, you know, I hear, I just hear rumors, I don't really know where we're at with this project. If the, I hear two sides of this, if the apartments don't go, then the senior center don't go. If the senior center don't go, will the apartments go? Where are we at with all of this?
So, we are waiting at this point for, with regard to the senior housing, we're waiting for a Mishta decision, which should come this week or next. After the prior two percent six thousand dollar agreement was turned down, as we said we were going to have to do, we went back to the drawing board and took a real hard look at whether or not we could continue to move on or not. We actually worked with the Olson family on the price of the property, we did some research with regard to the thirty-five versus the forty-five year, because that was one of the, one of the big issues for us, more so we thought. And at this point, if we get a grant from the state, we're moving forward. Now, we're going to go forward whether you do the ten percent or whether you do the two percent eighty-five hundred. The answer at this point is not about that. The answer at this point is we're responding to what we believed to be, even at the two percent six thousand, the city's interest to generate more revenue for itself as opposed to, within its rights, by the way. That's what the two percent six thousand dollar deal was. At this point tonight, if you decide to go with the ten percent, it would be, I believe, unfortunate for the city, but that would be perfectly within your purview. This is the, you know, what was, I guess, negotiated between This is the, you know, what was, I guess, negotiated between our attorneys and yours. And I, you know, I'm here to tell you that my opinions, which don't count for anything, or don't matter, but we are prepared to move forward at this point with either. And so what you have in front of you is an opportunity to do something which financially benefits the city in some ways to the detriment of other taxing bodies who have already weighed in on the subject, but in some ways not.
I was hoping that you would tell me that you received your tax credits. I talked with MISTDA this afternoon, and they are calling people already, and it will be on the website by Friday.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything yet.
Yeah, she said that it will be on the website, who was approved and who wasn't. I was hoping that maybe you had received a call.
Some good news, yeah. So that's where we're at. The Council on Aging, I believe, has received notification on their financing as well. I believe that they're either close to or at the spot where they're prepared to move forward. I know there's some documents going back between the attorneys right now.
So whether anything happens with those, this is a go?
Well, right, where we're at right now is we, you know, you have, as a body graciously approved in the past the 10% pilot. And so where we're at, this is a go. The question really is before you, which is which package of funding do you want to approve?
And it goes no matter whether the senior center goes or not?
Senior center's going.
Senior center's going.
Okay. Okay, I just want to be clear. I just, you hear?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, you know, you put us in uncharted territories a couple months ago, and we had a lot of soul-searching and a lot of hard work to try and make it, to try and make it work. But frankly, through, in some ways through the generosity of the Olson family, we were able to adjust things a little bit. And then actually, honestly, through a better understanding of the pilot legislation from, I think, 1966, is that right, George? Yeah, so we went back and did kind of a deep dive on that and found that the 10% pilot really, as long as it stays low-income even past 35 years, the 10% pilot will, I believe, is still in place.
Can you just help me one more? When I look at this 2% pilot, what are we figuring the 2% on? How are you going to come up with?
It's net shelter rents. So it's the rent collected less vacancy, net rent collected less.
Okay, so how, what are you going to deduct from the gross rent?
I'm not sure if we're going to put the utilities cost in or out. So if we, if they'll, this is done by building, so let's just assume that gross rent is just purely rent, that we're not also collecting for utilities, okay? If we're collecting for utilities, the first thing we do is we get to subtract the utilities cost because, like anybody else, that would just, yeah, that would money of the wars. Right, so let's just start with the shelter rent is just about, is just pure rent figure. The only deduction from that, from that gross rent to net rent would be the vacancy, so rent not collected. So if there's vacant apartments, then those don't pay, that's not net shelter rent.
Okay, so in my simple mind, it's the amount of the rent times the number of months that was rented?
Percentage. Yeah, it's the amount of dollars we collect times the percentage rate that you vote on tonight. So if we collect $200,000 in rent, you get, at a 10%, you get $200,000. At a 2% with 8,500, you get, I'm sorry, $200,000, you get $20,000. And at the 2%, you'd get $4,000 plus 8,500, so you get $12,500. Mayor Smith's numbers are approximately correct with regard to a difference in, that there's a smaller number that's paid in total rent, in total fees and taxes.
Okay, at one time, it was, we're going to be deducting all kinds of things out of this, but you're telling me there are just the two things, the vacancy and the utilities, right?
Yeah, that's all that gets deducted out of there is if utilities are added in, so in other words, if a person's rent is $800 and then they pay, say, $850 for a utility charge of $50, we take the utility charge off because we wouldn't be paying real estate taxes on something that's going to Consumers Power, for example. That would be double taxing. So we just get to the, you know, the equivalent of the rent times that percentage rate.
But you're going to take your rent, your gross rent, and you're going to take your management fees, and you're going to take your maintenance costs, and you're going to take all your operating costs, and all those things out to get to that net figure?
No, 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 no. Those come out below the, the taxes are figured on net shelter rent, not on net income.
Then one other area that I'm a little bit confused on, maybe you can help me with. If somebody comes in with a HUD voucher, has zero income, or their rent would actually be zero because of their income, you would receive some money from then HUD?
If they come in with a Section 8 voucher?
Right.
Yeah, we get paid by HUD.
Then is that counted as rental income?
Yes.
Okay. So no matter where it comes from, it's counted, okay?
Yeah, income's income.
I have a question, and you might not want to answer it. I'm going to try, all right? You've been in this business a while, and you've built a number of these developments, these low-income affordable for senior housing. Are there any developers out there that you know of that would build a development like this without having these types of low-income credits?
You mean income-restricted housing?
Yes.
I don't know a way to do it. I mean, we've done, we've done housing in our business, and remember that we're partnered with one of the biggest developers in the state for low-income as well, PK. We've done all sorts at Third Coast. We've done, you know, luxury apartments, and we've done low-income apartments, and we've done, you know, kind of stuff in between. And what happens is that the cost is the cost is the cost. And I'm, you know, I know everybody's got an opinion about how much we're making here, but the cost is the cost, and it's expensive to build new stuff. And so particularly when you're building in cities and you have different codes than if you're building out in, you know, out in more rural areas. But we've looked at this many times because frankly, we look at it and say, well, you know, why, you know, why can't we build these things without incentives? And what I can tell you is that in every place that we've looked, and the bigger the cities, the worse this gets in the state of Michigan. The cost to build new product is prohibitively expensive relative to the rents that you get. And so what you end up having to do is look for either creative financing ways to get around that or incentives, whether it's tax credits or other incentives within the state. Now, you can get around that a little bit with condos. If you're doing condos, you have sometimes, not always, but sometimes you have this little benefit, which is that individual condo owners can spread payments out over 30 years instead of 20. And they can also, they can, don't have to deal with floating interest rates. But, and they get homestead exemptions as well, so when they don't pay that 18 mils, that makes the total cost of occupancy, sometimes they can pay a little more to own the condo. But in terms of rental properties, whether it's, you know, moderate, high-income or low-income, it's nearly, I haven't seen any developments anywhere in the state that are being built without some type of, and I'm going to say this is not happening, it's just that we tend to deal more in cities. And it's just really, really difficult to try and make that happen. Now, one of the things that I'll tell you is that, because we don't just work in the state of Michigan, we're very lucky in the state of Michigan that our, that our state government has understood this and sees how to make that work. Because I can tell you that we're working on a similar project, a market rate project in the state of Illinois, which is just a mess right now if you've been reading the papers.
Yeah.
And we are having just a terrible time. In fact, it's just not working. The project isn't working at all. And that's with a local unit that is trying as hard as they can to make it work, but the state doesn't, doesn't have all of these incentives. So we've looked, because at our core as a company, we tend to be somewhat libertarian about these things, and we tend to not want to take anything that we don't need to make the developments work. But we've found, for example, I'll tell you, and I've said this before, and I don't know if it works the same in Manistee, but I can tell you that in the city of Grand Rapids, if you give me land for free, I still can't build. And that's a really terrible place to be. And it really comes to, the issue isn't about the cost of construction, and frankly, it's not about developer profits either. The issue is about the inability, it's about incomes. And incomes in the state of Michigan overall just aren't as high as they should be or need to be in order to support that development. So it's just a struggle all around. I don't know if that answers your question totally, but...
Well, it sounds like it's very unlikely that we'd get a developer to come in here who would need zero tax incentives or zero...
So here's the thing, I'll take zero tax incentives, and I know you're in the real estate business. I'll take zero tax incentives if you can bring the people who can pay $2,800 a month for a 1,000-square-foot apartment on the river.
Probably can't do that.
You know, you just built a complex in an old plumbing building down in Grand Rapids. Bought the building for about a million dollars. You put $2 million in it, the number of apartments, there's...
21 apartments.
Workout center in the basement.
In the basement, yeah.
Enclosed parking. They're starting at about $800 a month.
No, nope.
That's what the newspaper reported.
No, it's online, I can show you right now. The cheapest apartment in that building is an ADA apartment on the second floor, Unit 201. It's $1,165. The most expensive apartment in that building's $2,000 a month for a two-bedroom. And that building benefits from a TIF and from a neighborhood enterprise zone, no, I'm sorry, obsolete property. So we're able to freeze the taxes at $33,000 a year for 15 years. But yeah, that was actually a good project because it was an acquisition rehab, you know, it was a conversion project. We bought that building for a pretty low price relative to the cost. It would cost probably closer to, probably 10 or 15% more than that. And those are luxury loft-style apartments. I mean, they're true loft, they're tall ceilings and hardwood, or not hardwood, concrete floors and stuff.
Good write-up and a paper on it, so.
Pardon me?
Good write-up and a paper on it.
Thanks. Yeah, but the other stuff, like the stuff we've built on Michigan, and there's some others that we're building, we're building some mixed-use, mixed-income on Michigan Street right now. About $120 a foot construction cost plus all the soft costs, and those are also benefiting from new market tax credits as well as low-income housing tax credits, TIF, DEQ grant. I mean, it's the list of people, and the legal fees on that project were unbelievable because of how hard it is to get a project like that done.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. I've got some numbers that contrast the 2% and the 10% pilot to all of the tax entities, if I could get that foot up.
I have one more question for Ed Bradford, if you don't mind. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Good stop, Ed.
Yeah.
Good thing you had my tennis shoes on.
Chipewalk cottages, I would love to sell one. I want to put that up front. However, that is in the DDA district, and that $11,000 that Jim had on his spreadsheet, $1,150 I think it was, that's at 59.3 mils approximately. About 17.7 mils, 17.76 mils goes to the city. How much of that does the DDA get versus the city?
Well, it's in the DDA district. I don't know what the base value of that parcel was where the old hotel used to be, but the city won't get anything more because the DDA captures any increase in the taxable value.
Okay. So it's just the acquisition cost of the land, which I think was $175,000 for that parcel?
Which may or may not affect the assessment, depending on what it was assessed at. Just to give you a contrast on some of the millage, when you look at these, you look at school debt, for example, on the estimated $189,000 of net rent annually under 10%, that would be $717 a year, but about 25, a little over $25,000 for the 35-year term. That number drops to $5,000, $143 a year under a 2% pilot. You lose about 80% across the board and over a long period of time. It may not seem like a lot of money, but when you talk about medical care and when you talk about DOD Ride, Council on Aging, when you talk about .3 mils or .33 mils, a little bit of loss is money for those organizations. When you talk about school debt and you talk about ISD and community college, you're talking about thousands of dollars, and that's a lot of money. It's a substantial difference, and I understand, understand that just the city's going to benefit, but the city's going to benefit at the expense, and like Councilmember Ponter pointed out, you know, the last thing I'd do is if I had two partners in here, I'd sell my two partners out so I would gain more. That's not the way I operate.
I would totally agree with that, Jim, if they would come forward and state that. But they haven't, so it leads me to believe that they're comfortable and they see this project as a positive addition.
Any further comments?
I would say, as a response, that the city is part of the county, and as, we would, as a resident, part of the county, I would be against it. So I know that the county commissioners are okay with it, but they don't speak for everyone.
A lot of the reason that I moved here, and I'll speak for me, is because of a library and because of, not only the services that the city provides, but the other services that we have, like I can go to the college and take classes, which my wife and I have done. And they also have them at the senior center, and we can do that. I just feel like I don't want to cut them out of the loop. And it may be just a small amount, but I guess, I just feel like I'll have to work harder to figure out how to make our general fund budget grow.
Well, I do...
I hear what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. I just, and I know they're not complaining, and they won't. Being on the revenue sharing board, they never complained, the library never complained when they didn't get the money that they needed for doing some repairs. They're not going to complain, they're going to move forward and do the best they can. I believe as leaders that, me personally, I believe as leaders that I want to share with everybody to keep, to make sure that I've done my part to maintain those services for the taxpayers of the city, what little bit it may, it may help, whatever. $800 doesn't sound like much, but it may be a lot of money to them.
Two or $3,000 a year out of this pilot and municipal service agreement advantage to the city is not going to keep a person on the city staff. Last person, we just added two people to Public Works that are mostly funded from the state, but the last police officer we added took $85,000 to add that position. So, you know, we're not talking about make or break a position, we're talking about revenue that's fairly close, and I think sharing in an equitable fashion along the lines of the millages that the voters in the county and the city have voted to support is the proper way to go.
But it's our, on this council, it's our job to look out for Manistee and to grow this community. Are we going to take a chance and not grow this community?
When you talk about build a community, you know, I could go back and give you some more statistics. 37% of the rentals, 1,100 rentals in the city of Manistee are available for less than $500 a month, not counting utilities. You compare that to other communities, we have an abundance in comparison to other communities of low-income or affordable housing available here. Now, does everybody find exactly what they want when they walk into town? Probably not. Is there something here for everybody? I would readily agree probably not to that also. You know, getting people to build the type of homes that most people want, the entry-level homes and stuff, is a tough proposition these days. What I'm saying is that the city bears the disproportionate level of a particular income population. We actually have a higher level of poverty and a lower level percentage-wise of seniors than what the county does. So, you know, I look at all those together, and one of my questions is, is do we need more low-income senior housing? And I understand the concept. The concept is that a developer gets a higher point score for 30% and 40% and 60% than he does 80% adjusted median income. If it, there's all kinds of factors that go into MISTDA. There's all kinds of factors that go into MISTO scoring because he used to work on that sort of thing. Not necessarily about what you need, but how you can get more points and how you can put a package together to score high enough to get in the funding network. How many, there's what, about 28 or 29 applicants on the list right now for this funding cycle?
Yeah, we're, I'm not sure. I haven't...
He's got a list, Terry. There's only so much money to come down the list, so they rank them based on the points they get for the housing density and where they're located and income levels, and I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into that. Not necessarily based on, gee, do we really need that housing right there?
Well, there's been two projects, the Hollander Project and this project that Market Studies came back, that we do need this housing.
Yeah, they weren't city-specific studies, so, I mean, they picked tailed off of county studies, and I've been to county events, and I've got the documents, and yes, the county needs about 200 new housing units a year. The question is, does the city need those 200 units a year, or do we need some in RK or Wellston or Califa or Necoma? Where do we need those units?
Yeah, but why not bring them here?
Isn't that...
You'd like revenue, and you'd like people with incomes that can make a living.
Isn't that part of economic growth?
Yes or no?
Well, either pilot is going to build the apartments. I mean, either way we go, these, it's going to happen. Again, I want to, my vote's going to take into consideration that I do not want to exclude ISD. Maybe it's the social worker site coming from here. I don't want to exclude 911. I don't want to exclude all the services, no matter how small they may get and how little we may get from that because of that. I don't want to exclude them because that's why I moved here, is for those services and the city services. So it's been a real struggle for me. I will admit right from the beginning. I've talked with the city attorney today. I've spent a lot of time with this and struggled with it a lot. I just don't want... A better deal? Yeah, I think it is a better deal. I'll go along with it. But I don't want to exclude the other people, and the only way I can do that is to go for the 10% rather than 2%. So that's my take on it.
Any further comments?
I just think if the other entities had issues, as Councilman, Councilwoman Beaton, excuse me, said, stated, that they would have came in and gave their, excuse me, needs to us and to the city, so...
Well, we didn't ask them, and I'm not sure they're even aware. You know, and part of that could be them not doing their due diligence, they're not keeping up with government, but I think we have a responsibility to look out after them. I feel a responsibility to look out after them, whether they feel a need or not. I would not want to see ISD go away. I would not want to see the library go away. I would not to look to see those.
I don't think Councilman or Mayor Protem, I don't think those entities will go away.
Well, probably not, but I don't want to cut them out either. It's my opinion. It's my choice.
They're not going to go away, and they're just, the amount that they're getting, anything that they're getting, is better than the taxes on a piece of asphalt that's sitting in front of Olson's. So I think I just feel very strongly about what my role is as far as protecting tax revenue coming into the city, and I really think that my vote has to be in favor of the taxpayers of the city of Manistee and for what that represents to them. Our biggest complaints have been about streets. I think it's, and it really frightens me when I think about the fact that we've, through the budget session, we've talked, we've danced around the idea, you know, if we don't generate some more revenue, we may be talking about some personnel changes. Things like that have come out in our budget discussions, and I think that's a little bit, it's disingenuous not to vote for the option that brings more cash into the general fund, and that's where I'm at. So I, and I respect all of your opinions, and I've listened carefully to them and I've weighed them, but again, I come back to what we stand for and what we said, and by affirmative vote unanimously, on a couple of occasions, we've all approved the low-income housing. So to throw this in as, why do we need it at this stage of the game since March 7th, when we've already voted to approve low-income housing for seniors, seems a little, it's a cloudy issue. So I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments?
Okay, so for the 2% pilot, City Clerk, could you please take the role?
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
No.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
No.
And Mayor Smith?
No.
Motion failed.
What a shame.
Just to say, the second part of that, the municipal service agreement, is that...
It comes somewhat of a moot point at this...
It comes.
I think that it was high to the 2% pilot.
Okay. We could move on, strike that and move on to...
I would think so. I understand the problem.
Move on to Item C, Consideration of Pilot Ordinance 17-08 Third Coast Development. At their meeting on March 7, 2017, City Council took action to approve requests from Third Coast Development LLC for a 10% pilot for a term of 35 years for the senior project proposed for the former Olson Plaza property. A first reading of the ordinance occurred at the regular meeting on June 20, 2017, and could be adopted at this time. At this time, Council could take action to adopt ordinance number 17-08 Third Coast Development LLC pilot. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Pontiac. Is there any discussion? You please take role.
Councilmember Beaton?
I believe that we need this. I'm going to be voting yes, even though I like the financial part of it.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Zoning Amendment Z17-07, Amending Section 514 Parking, Bike Parking and Sidewalks in Section 1832 Dwelling Multiple Units. A request received from River Park 2 LLC for a zoning amendment that would amend Section 514 Parking, Bike Parking and Sidewalks, Item H in Section 1832 Dwelling Multiple Units, Item B3 of the City of Manistee zoning ordinance. On May 5, 2017, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, and at their meeting of June 1, 2017, made recommendation to City Council to approve the amendment. This ordinance has been reviewed by the Council Ordinance Committee. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, Council could take action to introduce zoning amendment Z17-07, Amending Section 514 Parking, Bike Parking and Sidewalks in Section 1832 Dwelling Multiple Units. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Beaton. Is there any discussion? Would you please take role?
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of an Update Mutual Aid Agreement with Charter Township of Filer. The Manistee Fire Department previously entered into a mutual aid agreement with the Charter Township of Filer on July 3, 2012. It is desire of both parties to amend and replace the 2012 mutual aid agreement. The attached memo outlines the exchange of fire services in both response areas. This agreement has assisted the City of Manistee and Filer Charter Township in the past, and both parties recognize the need to continue to evaluate these agreements. The amended area is specific to the fire apparatus response. The City of Manistee first-out apparatus will change to an aerial truck and operational crew for a commercial fire response and an engine with an operating crew for a residential fire response. Filer Township has signed the updated mutual aid agreement. At this time, Council could take action to authorize the amendment to the 2012 mutual aid agreement with the Charter Township of Filer. I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion?
No, I think this is a good change. It makes sense to me. I mean, why would you send the aerial truck out to a residential property having trouble navigating the streets and setting up? It makes more sense to send a pumper out. So that's the way I'm interpreting the agreement at any rate.
Any additional comments? Could you please take role?
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of USDA Rural Development Program Application. The city has an MDEQ-approved Wet Weather Correction Action Plan, or CAP, to eliminate combined sewer overflows with CSOs. The CAP consists of two primary phases. Phase one includes further studying and modeling the sewer system to identify sources of inflow and infiltration, along with the sewer line rehabilitation. Phase two includes design permitting and construction of an anticipated storage facility. USDA has recommended funding applications for each separate phase. Phase one funding request is up to $5 million and may include a combination of grants and loans as determined by the USDA. At this time, Council could take action to approve a funding application for up to $5 million for USDA Rural Development to complete Phase One of the city's Wet Weather Corrective Action Program.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Woodliffe and a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion? Jeff, is this, and Ed, is this contained within the budget? I thought I'd heard that our rate increases in reserves and stuff are going to be enough to cover payments on this without...
Once the application is received and reviewed by USDA, they put it through a formula that will determine whether or not any portion of this loan would actually be a grant, but, and Ed can, not his approval, but we believe that in the worst-case scenario, if we had to do a 2% loan over 40 years for the full $5 million, that the repayment of that would be, be able to be absorbed by the current rate structure, anticipating that three and a half percent increase each year.
And just so councils are aware, this is going to be a two-part project, so we're likely to be going back to rural development for a Phase Two financing. At that point, it's, I would say, if not probable, certainly possible that a portion of that second financing would be a grant, but we won't know until we go through that process. The other thing to keep in mind is there will be another notice of intent from our bond council that'll be coming that starts the referendum period, but that's just a formality that we have to go through, so that'll be on a feature agenda item as well.
Thank you. Any additional? Please take role.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a PEG Commission Proposed Fee Schedule. The PEG Commission has created fee schedules to help them generate revenue for their services. The fee schedule is to be used for all organizations which request PEG Commission services such as taping slash broadcasting meetings, editing and uploading to the PEG cable channels and posting to the MPATV/PEG website and YouTube. The proposed fee include taping charge of $100 per hour for the first two hours, $50 for 15-minute increment thereafter, recurring and monthly fees, travel and mileage if outside of Manistee County. These fees would not apply to any organization that wishes to have their own content broadcast on the PEG cable channels or on the PEG website. They are requesting approval of the fee schedule only and not a contract with the city. At this time, Council could take action to approve the PEG Commission fee schedule as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Just so that I understand this a little more clearly because...
I have a...
I'm sorry.
I have a motion by Councilmember Woodliffe and a second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Discussion, please.
I apologize, Jim. I jumped in too fast. This is just so that, this is just approval to bill the city for these amounts, right? I mean, this is all...
Or anyone that's using their services.
All right. I'm just, I'm just curious why we have to approve it, because I would think that this would fall somewhere in the budget, or does it not, or why does it need our approval as council?
Because it's a city commission, and they're going to be charging fees on behalf of this, basically on behalf of the city through that commission, so we need council approval.
Okay, so that's all. Okay.
The commission couldn't start charging people. There's a booklet that lists all the fees for services within the city structure, so...
Thank you.
Just be inappropriate time to ask how we're on a timeline for our own cameras or...
The equipment has been approved for being purchased, and the vendor is getting back to me as to when that'll be in and then when we can schedule the install. As I mentioned, I think, last week or maybe two weeks ago, their busiest time of year is in the summertime because they do a lot of schools and college auditoriums. They thought they could maybe work us in in July if the equipment came in, but I don't have a permanent scheduling date yet. If they can't in July, they'll try to get us in as soon as they can. That's where we're at with it, and when there's more information, I'll let council know.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Please take role.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodliffe?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of Applications to Boards and Commissions. City Clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Downtown Development Authority, Parks Commission, PEG Commission and Zoning Board of Appeal. All appointments by the mayor are subject to council's approval unless otherwise specified by statute or ordinance. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council should vote on the nomination. A majority vote in favor of placement of the nominee is required for appointment. The following applications have been received. Park Commission. There are four vacancies, one term ending 6/30/18 and three terms ending 6/30/20. One appointment may be a non-resident but must own real estate or a business profession having a licensed business location in the city. This is a mayoral appointment, and I would appoint Mark Tomaszewski on 106 Tamarack Street as an incumbent.
I would support that, mayoral appointment.
Please take role.
Which term? Which term are you appointing him to?
Ending 6/30/20. Ending 6/30/20. He's been a longtime member, and I wouldn't take a long run. Do you need a motion? I make the motion.
I'd support that for the motions.
At this time, mayor and council could take action to make appointments. They don't need a second.
I'll second.
Please take roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
And Councilmember Paniak?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Notes, communications, and announcements. A report from the Alliance for Economic Success. Regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Mr. Tamara Boswinka will report on the activities of AES and respond to any questions that the council may have regarding their activities.
My name is Tamara Boswinka. I'm a community economic development consultant at the Alliance for Economic Success, and I am here to present our quarterly update to you. Just a quick reminder, the AES mission is to provide business, community, and resource development services to prepare and implement strategies that generate positive economic and community development results, and we do this through a bottoms-up process. Basically, that means we respond to direction from the communities and the folks that we serve, such as yourself, as written in your strategic plans or other types of communication that indicate what you want us to do is a priority. Economic development, as you know, is really made up of three components: community development, business, job development, and resource development. Community development really is about the process of bringing a community together and engaging them to take action and to come up with solutions to problems. It's really the why do you want to live, or why I want to live here, and I want to live here now, and these are the reasons why, and that's what community development helps to build. Business and job development is really what most people would consider economic development, but it's only one of three components. It's the attracting, retaining, and expanding businesses, especially businesses for AES that have 10 or more employees. It's a stage-two business. Resource development is really about connecting people with resources such as grants, loan programs, training, really what we can do to help the individual or the business succeed. And so those three components, community development, business job development, and resource development, make up economic development in general. So, what were the priorities indicated to AES that we needed to spend our time and our talent and our resources towards tackling on your behalf? They were related to housing, countywide discussions, ensuring that the city was at the table, broadband, rail infrastructure, rail relocation, new industrial park occupants, packaging the industrial park and communicating it to the world, support the Stronger Economies Together Economic Development Plan, and then again engaging in countywide economic development strategic efforts. So, when we talk about countywide economic development strategies and efforts, over the past year, year and a half, we have worked on and we've actually finished the manufacturing plan, which is very important to the city because it has a port component to it, and I look forward to bringing that to you, to present it to you, so that you can really see all the work that went into it. And hand-in-hand, the Stronger Economies Together Plan. Both of these plans were data-driven analysis of our economy, so that we could really communicate what our competitive and comparative advantages are here in our region. Really, that means looking at what our emerging strengths are, so what industries, what industrial sectors will be successful here? And if they're not already here, how can we communicate to them that this is the place that they need to be? So, when we talk about the industrial park, we can have a better conversation with developers on why they should choose that industrial park in the City of Manistee over other regions. These plans are the plans that helped give us that data and actually focus our attention. If you don't have these types of plans and do this type of analysis, then you're casting a really wide net, and you're not necessarily targeted and focused. In a world of dwindling resources, we want to be on point at all times. So, the US-31 corridor plan, looking at that corridor and trying to ensure that it is attractive for new investors and for folks who may want to come and live and recreate here. Development ready discussions, collaborative land use permitting is a discussion we're having as a countywide level, and that is to do something similar to what you guys have already done with your redevelopment-ready communities, but a little different and more to come on that. And every master plan that we work on has a very robust economic development component. Real quick on the US-31 corridor plan, Rob Carson, the county planner, and I have been working on that together. We will be here in August to present that plan to you and to talk about a couple key segments along the US-31 corridor that if we focus access, our attention on access, aesthetics, and activity that go on on the land adjacent to the corridor itself, maybe we can do some really positive things to give it a facelift. I'm going to go back to SET real quick. That is a plan, the Stronger Economies Together Plan, that's been completed. Remember, that was work that is supported by the USDA Rural Development, and it targeted three industrial sectors. These, again, are sectors that are, have competitive advantage over other areas. That's our agribusinesses, food processing and technology, energy, that's renewable and fossil, and advanced materials. And if you know your science, that's really all about plastics. So, those are three industrial sectors that really have a chance of growing and being successful in our region. Those are the types of industries that when we are looking to have conversations with, those are the ones that we can confidently say, "You will be successful in this region." I wish biomedical was on that list, because then my kids could maybe come back to Manistee, but it's not. We know that it's a really strong industrial sector now, but it won't be tomorrow. So, again, we're targeted and we're focused. So, when we take that information and we're starting to package the industrial park, the city had already done a really great job at getting a lot of preliminary information out, but there was some information that we need to have in our back pocket. Every week, we, and I don't know if you know this, every week we get about one to two proposals that are sent to us by our partners at the state and federal government and other real estate groups nationwide, and they communicate to us proposals from industry. We don't know the industry name, like we don't know the name of the company. Sometimes we're not even sure what they're producing. We kind of can get a hint, though. But what they do tell us is what they have requirements for land, infrastructure, utilities, what they want to see in a workforce, what they want to see, quality of life factors, and they're asking for us to provide them for that information. So, the packaging of the industrial park is, you know, you guys are really on there. That's really important to have that information, so you can communicate and respond to those requirements very, very fast. And we do, we have been developing a sheet very similar to what you guys already do have. It's got a little bit more information on it, and the information is right down here in the utilities, and the city, you know, Jeff McCullough and others, we've been working with to get the details, because, you know, the devil is in the details, and that's what the industries want to know. Still working on it. There's some more information I need to get to communicate what our workforce skillset are, and, you know, a few other things, but it's coming right along. This is a spreadsheet, though, that I put together to show you, and I did this really quickly, but I wanted to show you last week. Okay, so on this column, it shows all the things that industry is looking for. These are two, these two columns show, within the last two weeks, some proposals that we got. You know, we are on these proposals really quick, but what I want to show you is this top line shows you the geography, the location that the industry is looking to locate on. We are Region 2, so within the last two weeks, we haven't received any that are looking for our region. But you will see Region 4, which is Mason County. When they are in Region 4 or Region 3, maybe sometimes even Region 1, that's the UP, we do send out information to them to try to attract them to our area. And then you'll see, you know, some of the utility requirements get really specific, and look how we're, this column here in green is our industrial park. This is what we have to offer. So, what we're doing is we're matching what we have to offer with what they're looking for. Okay? And so really, like I said, the devil's in the details when it comes down to utilities. They're looking for, you know, compressed air, what PSI do we have available? How much gallons per day does our, is our sewer capacity or water? What is our energy capabilities? And we've worked with consumer energy to understand exactly what we have and how to get more, because we're kind of finding that we need a little bit more than what we have, but it is there. It's just a matter of communicating what is there. And then that last line is incentives. Of course, they're always asking for incentives, and as this was a form of Renaissance Zone, what they're hoping is that you've retained some of those incentives. So, I just wanted to show you real quick what we do every day at AES when we get these proposals. We're matching it up to see if we can make a good fit, because I know you have the goal to have one new occupant a year. So, we use the information we got from SET and the manufacturing plan to understand our, the emerging industrial sectors, and then which ones that we already have that have great potential for expansion, and we are matching, and we are using the known infrastructure that we have in our assets, the industrial park, and we're using that to achieve this goal. You also asked us to look at rail relocation and rail infrastructure needs. We have had conversations with Marquette Rail, and remember, Marquette Rail operates the trains, but it's CSX who owns the railroad and all that infrastructure, and we've had great discussions with them. They have taken that and gone back to CSX to have that conversation, and we are waiting for them. Broadband. We spent the last year working very hard with Michigan Connect as a partner to understand our demand. We understand our demand. We have communicated our demand to providers. Unfortunately, state and federal funds for building out broadband in rural areas has been eliminated. You asked us to maintain a city presence in all kinds and manners of countywide discussions, and we have done that. Recently, we had U.S. Senator Peter's staff, Chief of Staff, tour the City of Manistee and understand the city's priorities. We have staff from Michigan North, which I'm not sure if you're familiar with, but they are a huge, huge promotional machine for the state of Michigan here in the City of Manistee, talking to them about what we have to offer, talked to the Manistee County Road Commission about working with them on trails. Trails, you know, is a huge economic catalyst for communities. The recreation plan implementation. As a matter of fact, I have a printed version of the recreation plan that I'm going to drop off. Just, you know, that was something that AES did with the county. Rob and I wrote that plan together. It represents about a $20,000 savings to the county that they didn't have to pay for, and it now opens up, obviously, to grants. We have access to that. So, I thought that was a rather fun process myself. The US Corridor Plan, we talked about that. Rob and I will be here in August to present that. Don't know if you know much about the M-22 Corridor Management Plan, but that, you know what M-22 is to the state and probably to the nation. We are the, Manistee County is the gateway to M-22, so we're very involved in capitalizing on that. And then you know, you probably know about the Two Lakes Sewer Collaborative. So, those are just a few countywide discussions that the city has a seat at, because AES is working on implementing this particular strategy on your behalf. Housing strategy, housing, had a lot of discussion about housing. We were able to find $6,000 to do a data-driven target market analysis for the City of Manistee. When that is complete, we are looking to have an event where we pair housing developers up with, you know, in a forum where they come and they understand the analysis and they understand needs, and we hope to have that by fall of 2017, so stay tuned on that. So, in addition to all of the strategies that you have directed us to focus our time, our talent, and our resources towards, there are other additional things that we have done on your behalf, just because they were the right things to do and they were important to the city. So, assisting a River Street restaurateur with an expansion plan. Helping facilitate a multi-group discussion about First Street, the First Street Beach Band Shelter, and AES has committed to fund that development. We continue to assist the Council on Aging with funding and coordination with their relocation to the Olson site. And of course, you know that there's going to be a Save-A-Lot franchise that's going to go into that Olson site, and that's going to generate about 12 new jobs. We're working with a high-end northern Michigan retailer who is looking to locate on River Street, and we're offering one-stop shop, one-stop help to new businesses to purchase, who has purchased the Council on Aging building. You know, of course, that's going to produce several new jobs, and that particular business is going to be another Manistee destination. And AES secured $20,000 for USDA grant to support Launch Manistee, and of course, you know, Launch Manistee connects students with employers with job openings. So, these are some work that we've been undertaking since our last quarterly report, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
The manufacturing plan, you said, was done?
Yes, it is completed. Just waiting for an opportunity to present it to you. So, I'd love to get on your agenda to do that.
Yeah, I would like to see that plan here quickly.
And really, I'd like to present that plan along with SET. There's similar plans where they're, they're looking, like I said, at what, what industry will be strong and successful here.
And then I know you said about the housing event, the forum. Are you going to present the findings to that?
Yes.
Before then, or?
No, we envision doing it at the event, and so we hope all of you will come to that event as well, for sure.
I'd like to see it as a presentation, but, and, you know, an event, but still see the findings upfront.
Here in a meeting?
Yeah.
For sure.
Or email to us or something.
The analysis has not been completed. We just secured the funding, so it'll take the next couple of months to get the analysis done, and then we anticipate the event in the fall. But as soon as we get that done, we're more than happy to share it.
Could you give me a little bit more information on what you mean by one-stop shop or one-stop?
Well, it means when somebody comes into AES and says, "I have a project." Sometimes they come in and they have a project, and they have a whole business plan, and they've got it all buttoned up, but they're looking for pieces like land, or help with funding, or the approval process. Sometimes they come in, they just have an idea. Let's pretend they come in with an idea. We take that and we say, "Okay, let's, you need to get a business plan. So, let's get you over to SCORE, or let's get you over to SBDC, let's get a business plan." We work with them to make sure that happens. They come back. Then they, we start talking about financing, so we work with them to understand their financing, and we work with our partners like Venture North to understand what kind of financing they may have, what kind of grants could possibly come from the state or federal government. And then they may look for a site. So, then we go out and we understand their requirements, and we help them locate a site for their building, whether it's brick or mortar or an existing building. Then they have to go through the approval process with the community. So, they've got to go in front of the Planning Commission, City Council, Township Board, whatever. Got to work through the zoning ordinance, site plan review. We, we work with them on that. I, you know, I do site plan reviews and stuff like that. And then they've got to actually go and get permits for, you know, so let's pretend they start out their business, and they're having a hard time getting a health permit. We might help smooth over that. You know, that was the Fillmore's case. So, that's kind of what is meant by one-stop.
Okay, but I still see it's overlay and a duplication of effort. Maybe I'm overthinking this, but it seems like the city is also trying to do that as well, especially with businesses on River Street, and I think you, in one of your slides, you demonstrated that you were helping-
Yep.
-the new, one-stop help to new businesses. The new one-stop help to new businesses that purchased the Council on Aging Building.
Right.
So you're helping them and the city's helping them at the same time.
That could be. We all play different roles. And I agree that some of the roles may sound like a duplication, but I don't have time to duplicate efforts. And we all need to work as a partner and collaborate together and all, and use all of our skillsets.
Okay, so I'm just wondering where the line is in that particular?
So in the city, you are very lucky to have some, you have talent to do certain work. Tyler certainly has proven within a short time here that he can do some great work. That has not always been the case. AES is, there probably is no duplication, though, when it comes to AES finding resources, financial resources to help small business or, you know, like I said, stage-two businesses, the 10 or more employees. So, you know, all along, the process is long and there's lots of different points that people come in to speak to us about. So it's not always linear and it's not always starting at point zero. But we definitely have to work as a team, meaning the entire community has to work as a team, to get good development and help development be successful here.
So could you help me walk through this a little bit? Somebody comes in and inquires about putting a business in the city. Is there any communication between our staff or between DDA? Or do you just, I kind of get the impression that you just kind of take the lead and just go with that? Would our city manager know about it? Would they know about that? Or at what point would they know about that?
So I guess, so it depends on which point they, at which point they're entering into the process. As we've talked about before, there are times when developers like that, restaurateur, I think that does know about that. Other times, they don't, they just want to talk to us and they want to get to a certain point before they're ready to release their name, whatever. That's their, that's their prerogative. But when it comes to zoning and planning, Denise, that's clearly in Denise's ballcourt. But before they go there, AES can help them get their application to a point where perhaps it's a lot easier once they get an official submission.
There's just different roles, there's just different roles that each play. Certainly, the staff is not equipped or qualified to help someone with a business plan.
I guess what I'm getting at is that I think staff would be, should be aware.
I can assure council, we play well together.
Okay, I'm sure you do.
Yes.
I'm just trying to hear that. I didn't hear that. I heard that.
We have a good working relationship with AES and DDA, and we know what strengths each has, and we will send them to AES, again, if they need a business plan. AES will contact us if they want to know where can we locate this type of a business? You know, what zoning is available. They might ask us what storefronts are open. They might ask Tyler that. We all work together.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to concerns and comments. Citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comment, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Do we have any citizen comments?
Okay, I said I wasn't going to say anything, but good evening. I sent some people in the audience, says it wouldn't be the same if I didn't. Okay, so I listened this evening, and I guess I'm a little confused and I guess disappointed. I would like to see, once, one year, a development that comes to Manistee that doesn't require a tax incentive that adds value and tax revenue to our city. Now, we have the cottages, but now we hear, well, that money's going to only go to the DDA section of town. Does nothing for the rest of the community. So the rest of the community starts looking like a ghetto, which it already is. There's streets and inner-city ghettos better than Manistee, Michigan. It's very disappointing. So some of these analyses that we do, I'm really kind of flabbergasted as well because we're sitting here talking about income levels of $19,000 for the people living in these low-income housing, yet we have, I think the person saying, made reference of $800 rent. No, I don't think it's going to be $800 rent, is there? The person is only going to get $19,000 to live on. So, no, we don't need any more low-income housing in Manistee. All we're going to be doing is relocating people from the county into the city, and it's going to tear our town down, which it has already. So, once again, we have all these great plans. I heard the same thing about the railroad relocation five years ago. Heard the same thing about the industrial park three years ago, five years ago. Name one thing that has worked out so far. It's great to have plans, but let's drive something home, folks. So, here's my comments. Thanks.
Any additional citizen comments? We have none. We'll move on to officials and staff. City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City manager?
Nothing at this time.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public works?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public safety?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finance?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Planning and zoning?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
We'll move on to council members. Council member Cooper, is that, council member Deaton?
I thought the Fourth of July event with the entire community was just spectacular. I loved every minute of what happened over the last four days. I can't thank the city and the volunteers enough for all the effort and the chamber for making this happen. It was just really very successful. I'm very, very impressed with what we did. I had a customer from California that I was showing condos to over the last few days, and he was just blown away. He just absolutely has fallen in love with Manistee. He didn't think he would. It was just a one-chance kind of stop. I think I'll check out Manistee, and he happened to hit it on the right weekend. And it's just great to hear such positive feedback from people.
Mayor Proctor?
I would echo that. I've heard nothing but positive comments. I've heard my great-grandbaby loved the petting zoo. It was just, it was just a great, a very great weekend. Heard a lot of comments from people at the marina. There was a couple boaters there that were really impressed with our community. The other, last thing I have is, some of our streets are way out as far as when we can get at them. I would like to have staff figure out if there's some temporary fix, some inexpensive something, something we can do to some of these streets that, some of them are out 10 years or more. I mean, we just can't continue to let them deteriorate to the point that they're, turn them back to gravel. In fact, some of them, turning them back to gravel might be a better, a better option than to leave them the way they are. I would like to see if there is any options. If there's, can we do tar and chips? Can we do something that's not, that's cost-effective, but yet we'll get, get the roads in a little better shape? And I understand infrastructure. I understand not spending a lot of money and having to tear it up later, but, you know, in 10 years, if we put a road down 10 years, we don't do anything with it, it'll be back to make a whole potholes anyway, so. Thank you.
Member Gittsby?
Not at all.
Council member?
I do have one thing, and that's my constant, is the city recycle center. Last weekend, I recycled paper and plastic, and it was on the 29th. And by the metal and plastic bin, there was garbage. In bags, clear bags, garbage, back of a TV, and chairs left there. And it seems that our cameras can't pick up the license plates like originally thought. That's why we put them there. Manistee Township, as of 7/1, halted their recycle program because of the illegal dumping. And unfortunately, we will probably bear the burden of that with people from out-county dumping garbage. So I'd like to put this, have this put on a work session to update or bring in better cameras and more security if possible, or even shutting down the recycle center permanently. That's it.
Council member Pottier?
Yeah, just a couple things. I wanted to see where we're at on getting sidewalks fixed. There's quite a few sidewalks that need to be repaired in Manistee. Let's direct it to Jeff there.
Jeff can speak to that. After the cleanup of the festival, that's the next project that the Public Works Street Department will begin, is sidewalk replacement.
Okay. And you're doing it in sections?
We're doing it in sections. When we get a sidewalk that's reported that it has a trip hazard over two inches, that's the threshold that our insurance company deems a liability for us, a responsible liability. So if we're, if we're aware of those type of situations, then we'll do those along with the other sections. But we're trying to do them so that we're orderly going through the city.
All right, thank you.
Are you still doing the grinding, grinding them off, or?
Yes, it's kind of a two-part process. So when we identify the next section that we want to go through, the first thing we'll do is have that company come through and grind off as many of the trip hazards as they can, and then we'll follow up with repair and replacements with our staff. The cost to grind those down is about 25% of what it costs to remove and replace.
You've grown something out by my place, and it's worked really well. That's why I was asking.
Right.
And then I just have to echo what you guys have said about the festival. It was really good and everybody enjoyed it. I was glad to see everybody getting along. I know Grand Haven had some issues and was really glad to see that there was no fights, there was no big issues. But I do have concerns about the speed limits down at the beach, especially on First Avenue, or First Street. To get something posted there for reduced speed, especially during the Fourth, it was very congested, and I've seen a lot of, you know, when there was that bumper, the bumper, it was, there's children around, you want to be careful, and to just reduce that. So maybe put that on the work session we can talk about.
I'd like to thank all the citizens and guests that we have here tonight and for the participation. Spirited debate, and I think council member Deaton said it, you know, we will often have a difference of opinion, but we can respect the difference of opinion and make decisions and work together to move forward. I could not tell you the number of people that I talked to this weekend, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, at different events, grilling steaks and meeting people from Ohio, that, what a gold mine you have here, what a beautiful city. And they had come into the marina and they thought it was just a gem. I don't know why we haven't found this before. You know, the comments, how clean it is, you know, how interesting the markets are, the stores are downtown, the history. It was a wonderful weekend. So thanks to all the staff, I know public safety, public works, city staff, everybody was involved in making it a very successful weekend. So thank you. With that, I'll take motion to adjourn. Motion.